We're going to start today with Joey Bowler, seat number three. Joey Bowler is a longtime resident of Mesquite, having moved here as a youth in 1979. Attending college took him away, however, he and his wife Karen have 36 years between the Mesquite in 1992, choosing to raise their three children here. Joey earned a bachelor's degree in business administration and marketing from Southern Utah University, and eventually a second bachelor's in secondary education at Dixie State University. His professional career included working for the Coca-Cola Corporation and owning various businesses, including Century 21 Bowler Realty. Since 2012, Joey has been teaching and coaching various sports at the Virgin Valley High School, and for the past three years has served on the school organizational team, SOT, there as well. Joey previously served on the Mesquite City Council from 1995 to 1997, a time of rapid growth in the city. Joey loves Mesquite. He is proud to be a member of the community and grateful for the roots his family put down here in this great valley. Please welcome Joey Bowler. Karen Duskowski is our next candidate. Karen was appointed to the city council seat number four in 2020 to fill a vacancy. Serves as a representative and voting board member of the Southern Nevada Health District. She has 32-plus years professional background in public health and safety, whereas she has administered and analyzed data as it pertains to budgeting, quality improvement, and desired outcomes. She's worked in the emergency medical services of the Salt Lake City and Fresno Fire Departments, and was licensed EMT in Utah and California. At Intermountain Healthcare in Salt Lake City, she monitored transplant recipients and donor outcomes. At the University of California San Francisco School of Medicine, she was responsible for implementing training programs, and also worked in data administration and analysis at Department of Veterans Affairs Hospital in Fresno, California, and also in St. Louis. She has, I'm sorry, objective with no conflicts of interest, and it is her honor to serve the citizens of Mesquite. Please welcome Karen Duskowski. Our next candidate is Karen Fielding, for seat number one. Karen moved to Mesquite in January 1995. During the last 27 years, she has seen many changes. Her love for this town is like today, as she has always, that this is her first choice, Mesquite is her first choice. And she thinks this is amazing in a city with much to offer residents for all ages. She is very active in the Mesquite community, involved with many committees, organizations, and fundraisers. This community means everything to her. She has spent 27 years getting to know our community and feels she has a direct and personal connection with all of the citizens. She would like to be the voice for everyone, for the children of Mesquite, and she is a working citizen and the community, as well as the community of retirees who have chosen Mesquite as their home. Please welcome Karen Fielding.
Okay, Patty Gallo, running for seat number three. Facts about Patty Gallo. Volunteer of the Year for City of Mesquite in 2018. Volunteer of the Year for Mesquite Animal Shelter in 2018. Appointed to Virgin Valley Community Education Advisory Board. Foster mom for kittens, and one of the only neonatal mom for abandoned kittens with the Mesquite Animal Shelter, and we care for animals. Strong background in corporate management with a $3 billion company, and with her team, grew the division business from 24 million to 44 million. Regularly attends and watches council meetings, and follows the happenings in the city. I will be a strong servant and productive voice for the people of Mesquite. Please help us welcome Patty Gallo for seat number three. Kim Walters, running for seat number four. Kim moved to Mesquite in 2002 with their husband Doug and their son. Kim was the owner-operator of a commercial business. Kim is currently a massage therapist at Oasis Chiropractic Center. Kim serves on the Mesquite City Charter Committee and volunteers with 1,000 flags over Mesquite, Three Square Food Bank, Salvation Army, and Kids for Sports. In the last 20 years, she has seen the city experience many changes, and now hopes that through the role of the city councilwoman, to be a part of making this amazing city a place people want to live and raise a family. Please help us welcome Kim Walters, running for seat number four.
Paul Wineslas, running for seat number four. I was raised on a farm in Salt County, Utah, where I was taught that hard work and integrity were extremely important. After high school, I worked odd jobs until I got hired by Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District, where I worked for over 30 years and retired in 2016. My wife Lisa and I moved to Mesquite in 2018 and have learned to love this area. I am currently on the Mesquite Master Plan Committee and sit on the board of the Mesquite Community Education Foundation. I have found that the wants and needs of these two bodies are not in sync with each other at this time, and I would like to see more cohesiveness. Therefore, I am running for city council and will do all in my power to bring this community closer together and a great place for all to live. Please help us welcome Paul Wineslas for seat number four.
I would like to remind all the candidates that you will have one minute and one minute only to respond to your question. We will be using the timekeeper. The same question may or may not be asked to another candidate. None of the candidates have seen any of these questions prior to being asked the question that they will receive. Karen, your question is, how often do you visit with business leaders around town to check in with them to see what's going on?
That's a great question. I am around town every day. I've been embedded in this community for 27 years, and today and the last campaign I've ran is no different than the last 27 years. I'm constantly visiting businesses, seeing what they can do, and how the City of Mesquite can better themselves, to help our businesses grow. So, that would be on a daily basis, I visit them.
Thank you, Karen.
Joey, do you think more should be done to encourage charter schools to start up here?
Absolutely. I am an educator. Was this one posed to me? Anyway, I believe that parents have every right and say their child's education. I'm in the public, I'm in the public, hold on. I'm in the public education system, and there's a lot of kids that aren't served by that. They should be able to go out and be served the best way possible to have a great education and be able to progress and be productive citizens.
Thank you to Mark Wetzel, fabulous board member from Conestoga Golf Club, and Kelly Adams, CEO of Mesa View Regional Hospital, our official timekeeper. She doesn't have to get the hook up yet. Lucky number 13, and that goes to Patty Gallo. How important is it to bring kids' sports to Mesquite?
Perfect question for me. It's been something that's been on my mind, not only for sports, because I think it is very important, it gets our kids learning team building, et cetera, but I also think that we need activities for children that are not in sports. What are we doing with those children that are not participating as well? So, sports are very, very important. You learn a lot of very important skills, but at the same time, learning team, learning to work together, do things for each other, but I do think that it's not just kids in sports, I think we need something for both.
Question is, the directional signage in the medians is owned by the city, and there is a hefty charge to be an advertiser. I would like to know if you would support having some free signage for nonprofits?
Really hadn't thought too much about that, because I know that we have a lot of nonprofits here in town, and word of mouth really helps, but signage would be good. Again, though, I think that the signs should be appropriate to make the city look nice. I would also hope that we can get the nonprofits to advertise in many different ways. They need the funds, they need support, they need you to understand their issues, and yes, I would support signage in the city. Thank you.
How do you stand on overturning Roe versus Wade?
That's a hot topic, and I think that, I am happy that the states can decide that on their own, whichever way that it goes, but I don't think the federal government should be involved with our personal healthcare, so I like that they're leaving it on a state level.
These were all questions that were sent in from our membership, so we did not go to the public, because they're not paying members any tax. Okay, Paul, question number 23. What's your opinion on the water situation in Mesquite? Do you think we have enough water to sustain additional building in Mesquite?
I've worked for the water company for 30 years, so maybe this is a decent question. It's my understanding that the aquifers perhaps aren't monitored quite as closely as they should be. Unless you know how your aquifers are reacting to the water you're drawing out, and how they're replenishing through the springtime and into the summer, that's really not an answer that anyone could give. I think they do a really good job with using reclaimed water for large grass areas. I think they do a really good job with desert escaping. Everything that I see here screams conservation, which is exactly what the middle of the desert needs, and unfortunately, like Utah, you don't have a lot of other places to bring water in from. So, I think due diligence would be extremely important, making sure that we understand what the limits are to the aquifers we have, and when we hit those limits.
What do you believe is the number one most important item that the city council should focus on in the future?
Thank you, Tony. So, the hot topic that's been in the City of Mesquite for several years is affordable housing. When the strategic plan put number one, affordable housing, on the top of their list several years ago, would have been a prime time to start affordable housing. You all know right now, there's nothing affordable. The prices of homes are going up, the interest rates are going up, so affordable housing, workforce housing, would have been number one, and I still think it's most important. But the one thing that we've got to remember is, if the city wants affordable housing, the city is going to have to possibly give up some city land, maybe use some RDA funds to grade it, send out some requests for proposals for developers who want to come and help the city move forward with affordable housing. So, I would say, Tony, affordable housing is on the top of everybody's list, and if we're going to keep employees here, workforce, we need some affordable housing for them. The city has done an exceptional job of proving...
Joey, Canada recently implemented a plan to cut down on investors scooping up all the properties for sale. What are your thoughts about imposing a ban on collecting rent for a number of years if you purchase a property in Mesquite and it is not your primary residence?
Okay, I believe in the free market system. When government starts to regulate that, it seems like we have problems. You know, California's implemented rent control and things, and had a lot of problems with it. If you let the system take care of itself, it's kind of like a pendulum, sometimes it swings left or right, but it always comes back to the middle. I think government should stay out of private enterprise property.
Okay, and this is going to Patty Gallo, number 22. Do you regularly watch the city council meetings to know what is going on?
Absolutely. I've been attending or watching for the last couple of years, especially since there's so much to learn, what's going on in this town. They're always very interesting, and not only do you get to know what's happening in town, what some of the issues are, but you also get to meet some of the people, you get to see who some of the council are, those that get up and speak, which I think are, it's very brave sometimes to get up and speak and speak your heart. So, I, every, the great thing is if you don't know, you can sit home in your pajamas and watch it live, and if not, the next day, they're off on the website, so there's every opportunity to see what's going on in town.
Okay, would you support taking a second look on how businesses licenses are issued so that the average person can apply without having to hire legal advice to be sure that they are in compliance?
Can you read the last part of that again?
Sure, I'll read the whole thing again. Would you support taking a second look on how business licenses are issued so that the average person can apply without having to hire legal advice to be sure that they are in compliance?
So, I guess, you know, businesses is not one of my big, strong points in town, but I understand businesses, and I would assume that they would have enough planning so that they don't have to, I guess I'm really not caught up what you're getting at. I'm not sure what you're getting at about the required...
Again, would you support taking a second look at how business licenses are issued? So, how they're issued so someone could look at that without having to hire a lawyer to interpret?
Oh, okay, oh, interpretation, sorry about that, I want to be clear. Yes, legalese gets to be a little incumbent, and we get a hard, you know, we want to make everything clear. All of our policies should be, all our standards should be looked at regularly.
Okay.
Definitely, yes, thank you, sorry.
This is the city's economic development community profile statement on their website. Their mission statement is strategically grow Mesquite's economy through business attraction, retention, and expansion, and provide support for workforce and community development. Vision statement, promote balanced growth of business and industry in the Mesquite region. Do you think they are meeting their mission and vision statement promises?
Yeah, I think their statement and their vision is spot on. You know, part of the problem we have in recruiting businesses to come here is they have to be a business that will fit Mesquite. Google, Amazon, they're not coming here. The other problem is, is that they have to be able to offer their employees something, they have to be able to recruit employees that want to come here. They need to be able to afford to buy a home here, they ask about education, they ask about shopping, that it makes it more difficult to recruit the businesses to come to Mesquite unless we have something on the other end of it to offer, and as Karen said, you know, housing has got to be at the forefront of it to recruit new businesses to come.
Question for Paul, number one. Is the City of Mesquite actively recruiting businesses to bring their brands and/or store locations here to create opportunities?
I think they were. I'm not sure if the contract was renewed to continue that. I was under the impression that perhaps it was not. I think we need to make sure of bringing businesses in, but unfortunately, we also need to bring a workforce in, and as long as our young are leaving Mesquite, you're going to be hard to entice a business to come here when every business in town is looking for employees and nobody can find them. I think it's too far, I think we need to do both, and I think we need to do them both at the same time. It's not the chicken or the egg.
Question is... Okay, the question is, why did the city enter into an agreement to run a tourism center when they don't have the personnel or resources for it? Do you think they should break this lease? It's never open.
That's a great question. You know, when you start something and you have an agreement, you never know how it's going to turn out, you never know how it's going to end. If it was just because of not enough manpower, I know that they have some great volunteers over there, but nothing's definite. You don't know when you start an agreement, so I'm not sure why it's failing and what the agreement looks like to answer that question. I'm not sure what it looks like to make that decision whether we should cancel it or not, to be honest with you.
Joey, what plans do you have to provide low to moderate income housing for the future workforce, not necessarily making over the $15 to $17 an hour range?
You know, I went to a business, can you hear me? I went to a business the other day, and there was a line going in outside. They only had half of it open because they didn't have enough people to run the thing. We definitely have a problem with our workforce, we need more people. We've got to have housing that is sensible. What you don't want is to build some affordable housing that ends up being, for lack of a better word, a slum or a blight, which your emergency, like your police, get multiple calls there because it's rough. We've got to have some affordable housing, but it's got to be the right fit. I know they tried to put some apartments in the neighborhood, residents were upset. We need to find somewhere where it works for everyone. It is a must. If we're going to expand, we've got to have workers. If not, you know, we're going to have these restaurants and businesses that are half-full because they don't have enough workers, so I think it's super important that we tackle that question.
Patty. There was a mention of a 3% liquor tax for consumers to generate approximately $1 million to the city's budget. Do you think that's a good idea?
I respectfully decline. No, I'm only kidding, I just wanted to say that. I do know we do need to raise taxes somewhere. Sitting through the budget meeting, the challenge that the city is facing right now is that our departments, the prices have gone up so much that just for the normal daily things that they use has gone up 30 to 40%, so they can't even manage with what we have right now. We have to do something. We don't want to raise our home taxes, which we know we really can't do anyway here in Nevada, so I think we do need to do something. From what I understand, it's only packaged goods from, like Ali's Liquor, so it's not going to affect you going to the casino and having a cocktail or anything like that. So, it's really, and the other good thing about that that could help our city is, so many of the people that come to Ali's Liquor are not from Nevada, they are from Utah, so we are able to get some funds from outside.
Question is, Mesquite Boulevard is in desperate need of revitalization. Do you have any thoughts on this?
Yes, I do. My thoughts are, we're doing a lot right now in order to make it more attractive, to attract, you know, there's other things to do in town. And small businesses can build along the area if we, you know, we've got the property. So, I encourage downtown area. Everyone needs really something they call the downtown. I, there's a lot of good businesses here in town, and some of the property, though, however, is not available unless they want to sell to us, to prospective businesses. So... So, I think we're on a really good track right now to get it built.
Kim. Mesquite has a labor shortage. There are many open positions and not enough workers to fill the open positions. We now have more businesses and manufacturing on the way. What are you going to do to bring in more people to fill the current open positions and the new positions that will open with the new businesses and manufacturing coming?
You know, everybody needs employees. I don't care where you go, there's a help wanted sign. And I think with the new businesses that are coming, we also have a lot of residents that commute from here to St. George, to Huracan, to Las Vegas. I think with the new businesses that are coming to town, it will be much easier to keep our employees in town, which also means they're spending their money in town and not commuting up to St. George. The cost of fuel right now, you know, would be a blessing to not have to commute. So, I think the new businesses coming into town will be challenging to get their employees. And the rates that they're going to pay these employees, people will commute from St. George to here to work and not the other way around.
Okay, Paul, number nine. Let's see. What are your thoughts on hiring an economic development manager? Other cities have them, and this is not considered a conflict of interest. Seems like they figured it out.
I don't know how you don't have one. The one thing this community needs is economic development. It needs to bring in, not necessarily just affordable housing, but housing price for workforce. We don't want slums, as was brought up. Nice housing that can be afforded by working-class people. We don't have that right now. Bringing in economic development to bring their jobs here is going to help with that, too. As has been said many times, that's probably the number-one need of the city of Mesquite right now.
Question is, businesses are clamoring for employees. One of the largest impediments to attract employees to Mesquite's housing, what are your plans to approve multifamily housing in this community?
That's a great question, because now I can answer, finish answering the question I was going to say earlier. So, a caveat on that. I think that the city has done an amazing job approving the housing, multiple family subdivisions, and that's something that we really need, are more multi-family houses that are affordable. So, some of the housing projects that have been approved by the city aren't affordable, though. They are the market rate. And so, until we can get those builders to build an affordable house and bring down that rent, then we still are going to go round the circle all over again. So, I think that if we can get some of those developers to develop multifamily, I think there is one rural housing coming, and I think that's going to be on an income scale. But the other ones that they have approved, they aren't affordable. So, if there's some way we can get a developer to do multiple family at a discount, or... Thank you.
What will the city do to bring more activities for children to the city, such as theme parks of some sort, updated parks, sports, children museums, et cetera?
I work with kids every day. They tell me what they want. I can tell you one thing, is that they've always, they thought they were going to get a skate park. They were excited about that. That would be something that we could do. Ball fields. And again, we have to have employees, you know, to take care of this stuff. And I think that, everything that we're talking about comes back to workforce and having people to take care of the things we want to bring in. Skate park, parks. But like I know, not to harp on the skate park, but I don't know how many kids up there really, really want a skate park. And I think that's, if I was, if I counseled, that'd be one of the first things I worked on, is to get a skate park. And again, I think, I can't remember, I think Patty was saying, we've got a lot of kids that aren't in athletics. If a kid is in athletics, or a band, or extracurricular, their chance of doing drugs, getting someone pregnant, or getting pregnant goes down about 75%. So, anything we can provide them that gives them that outlet to do something positive, we need to do.
Okay. Patty? Number 27. Where do you see Mesquite in five years?
I'm not even sure I know how to answer that. I think I see us, the way we are right now, maybe a little bit larger, with a little bit more amenities, things happening for our kids. For example, as we were just talking about with the kids, I think that's going to be our main priority. And there's a program coming into town, STEAM, which is for science, technology, et cetera, for kids. So, for those children that aren't going to be going to college, or they're not in sports, this gives them an opportunity. The more we can teach our children a trade and give them an opportunity here, I think will certainly help our community grow and be more economically strong. So, I really think that looking, our future's in our children, and it's keeping them here in town.
Question is, I'm not in favor of the city running daycare centers. However, do you think the city should do more to support daycares to start up?
That is a good question, and I'll tell you that I do know that there's currently a survey being conducted here in town about what kinds of childcare is needed. It's important that we support our young families so that they can work that. And I'm excited about that. I'm working with George Galt on this, and we hope to improve the situation here. Childcare is very important to our city.
Kim. Do you support the purchases of housing in Mesquite for vacation rentals that limit the availability to those families to rent or purchase? Sorry. Do you support the purchases of housing in Mesquite for vacation rentals that limits the availability to those families to rent or purchase?
I think with the housing shortage that we have right now, the VRBOs and the Airbnb's are not in the city's best interests. I know it's a private sector, and it's a way for people to, you know, add to their own income, but there's so many people that are coming to town that are looking for a place to rent, and people are renting out their residencies for weekends only, and that's just adding to our housing crisis. And the prices that they're charging for their short-term rentals, they're charging as much for a weekend as somebody can afford to pay for a whole month. So, I would be more in favor of not having the Airbnb's and VRBOs in town.
So, the number that was polled, number 20, was already read. The number that was polled was the question below there. So, I'm going to, if the candidates are okay, just switch that back to the one that wasn't asked that's right after that one.
Can I tell you after you ask me?
No, that's a really good question. Do you want to redraw? No, let's do a redraw.
Ask me another question.
Are you sure?
Absolutely.
Okay, because we're happy to redraw if you'd like to. No? Okay, I will proceed then to number 21. What are your thoughts about the police chief and the fire chief to be required to live inside the city limits in case of an emergency?
I think in that case, that would make a lot of sense. If they live in Vegas, or if they live in St. George, and you have an emergency, or you have a real severe storm, there's a chance they're not going to be able to make it back to Mesquite. I think at certain levels, that makes perfect sense, and I'm sure that their pay is commensurate, that they would understand what the reasons were for that.
Karen. We need a vocational technical school here to meet the demands of our rural community. What thoughts do you have on that?
That's a great question. So, I raised my three kids here. Let me tell you, vocational technical school, we have an amazing campus, CSN, in the city of Mesquite, that all three of my kids have got, did the jumpstart programs, and got credits before they graduated high school. So, I think first, we need to support CSN, their administrators, all their programs, before we start another vocational school, technical school. We have the CSN who's been sitting here for years and years and years, and we all know that if you don't use it, we're going to lose it. So, they just had their very first EMT class up at the high school with nine students, which is amazing. Those nine kids now are going to graduate with an EMT credit. So, that is something that CSN has started this year, and I hope that they get support from the city to continue that program and other programs that they would like to bring to the city of Mesquite.
Thank you, Karen.
Joey, where do you think funding should be cut in the city's budget that isn't making a difference?
Actually, I got the budget right here, and I've been reading through it. I don't know if there's anything that can be really cut. I think there's some areas we need to put more money in. Some of the areas that I think we need to look at is you, in your law enforcement, your fire. A lot of the areas around us who are raising their wages were behind. We don't want to lose people that we've trained for 10 or 15 years because they can move on somewhere else and make a higher wage. We need to be competitive, so I guess what I would say, we need to look at where we need to put money to be competitive and keep employees long-term.
Patty. Let's see. Many businesses are looking for locations like Mesquite to relocate their enterprise and operations. What are your plans for economic development for the area?
Well, since I'm actually not in the role yet, it's a little hard to know what some of the opportunities are out there. But I do think that economic growth is vital to the city, and I think so far, the city's done a really good job on deciding on who to come in and to what they're offering. So, I do think that economic growth is important, but I do think it has to be smart, and I think it has to make sure that it's not, we're not overcoming ourselves, overcoming the city. But I do think that so far, the council, some of the companies that they've brought in have been, that are really, really going to benefit our city, and that's what I would like to continue to do, is to keep those companies and new companies coming in that really do help benefit the city.
Question is, the city council meetings are so long for businesspeople to attend after their work, they're working all day. I understand that they are videotaped. However, you have to scroll through the meeting to get to the business agenda items. Would you support moving general public comment, proclamations, and awards to the end of the meeting?
Well, actually, this is a really good question because right now, we've got enough people in here for a study. Maybe we can ask everyone what they think. I mean, really, we do have to listen to the comments. That's part of our state law. We have to be able to take comments about anything, and especially, and if you notice, comments at the beginning and comments at the end are for general comments, but if you're getting ready to talk about, you know something that's on the agenda, you need to make your comments at that point in the agenda. I know that's a little confusing sometimes because you think that you know what's on the agenda, and that's what you want to talk about. But again, that's what our role is. I'm on, I serve on the board of the Southern Nevada Health District, and they do the same.
Kim. I have concerns as a resident of not having a city manager on duty full-time. Do you know why that is the case? That's not I as in me.
I also think we should have a city manager on duty full-time, and right now, I know our city manager is on leave of absence, and I've heard he's doing much better, and hopefully he will be back to work soon. And if he's not able to come back, I know they're going to post the position, that the city definitely needs one. There's a lot of matters. There's a lot of matters that need to be addressed, and the city manager is a person that takes on those duties and responsibilities. So, yes, we do need one.
Okay, Paul. Mesquite is primarily a retirement community. Now, with more businesses coming here, we need more housing and workers. Residents complain that they don't want affordable housing near their homes, but yet they want services such as golf course attendance, servers in restaurants, et cetera. If you're elected, will you be able to help the businesses here get what they need to attract and retain the best talent?
I would do everything in my power, and where I'd start is with the young of Mesquite. When you have a senior class, and you're offering scholarships, and there's over 200, and only 17 put in for those scholarships, and only 12 fill them out correctly, that's 5% of your workforce that could be. We need trade schools. We need to work more with Southern Nevada. We need to keep the workforce here. We also need to realize that we're a community. We're not two separate segregated places. If you live in a community that's 55... If you live in a community that's 55 plus or you're in an HOA that's full, fine. But if, if there's property around everywhere else I've ever lived, the workforce, the elderly, the middle-aged, the young, they all live together and do so in harmony. There's no reason that Mesquite can't be that way. These kids are good kids. Let them mingle and become a part of the community as well.
Karen, if you are elected, can you tell us what your top three priority projects would be?
Yes. When I'm elected, I, I like to put it, when I'm elected, um, affordable housing, try to figure that out. Economic development, we need somebody who's going to promote the city of Mesquite and bring in more businesses. We need also workforce and our children to be educated in the city of Mesquite. So I would like to work closer with CSN and the high school to get the best employees' workforce that our city has to offer. Um, and so those three would be my first three. Um, and then again, let me just tell you, public safety is first and foremost on everybody's list. So we need to make sure that our police and fire have everything they need to be successful in the city of Mesquite and continue to keep it the safest city. So that would be my, I guess, four.
Joey. How would you feel if the city were to rezone some of their current property holdings for affordable housing?
I don't have a problem with that. But again, I, I kind of had to question this earlier. It's got to make sense. You go in and you put it around existing single-family homes, you're going to have problems. You're going to have people at the meetings yelling and screaming. So I know the city has property available. Absolutely go zone some of that that doesn't have anything around it and start. And you could phase it, you could have multiple phases. Start with apartments, twin homes, um, and, and graduate from there. Because we have the assets and properties of the city to do that.
Lucky number, last one.
Patty. In your opinion, how would you prioritize the need for affordable housing in Mesquite? And do you have ideas on implementing a program to correct this problem?
To correct a problem? I guess.
The, um, affordable housing.
I think we, um, I think the conversation, affordable housing, uh, kind of throws people off. I think what we need is workforce housing. Um, affordable housing sounds very, very different than, um, workforce. We do need housing for our, as our businesses. If we want our businesses to come here, we want our children to stay, we want them to have jobs. We do need to make sure that we do have, um, housing for them and their families coming in. So, uh, the word affordable housing, I think, makes people's backs go up. But when we're looking at workforce housing, I think that that is something that we absolutely do need. And, um, I know that the city is looking into that because as we're bringing in companies, they're starting to pay very, very well. And people will be able to afford to live here and have their apartments and their families come here instead.
Okay, we want to be conscious of and respectful of everybody's time. But we want, we want you to take just 30 seconds, only 30 seconds. Give Karen the microphone to start. And we want you in 30 seconds, Kelly, we're testing your math skills with that phone over there. 30 seconds, why someone should vote for you.
I will tell you why you should vote for Karen Fielding. My motto, and I've learned, I've lived by this, and this is what I go by. You cannot know where you're going unless you know where you've been. I've been in Mesquite for 27 years. I've seen a lot of growth and I want to be part of the success for the city of Mesquite. Thank you.
Uh, when you run for office, uh, your title is public servant, not self-serving. Um, one of the problems we have in our country is there's a lot of self-serving politicians. They get into office and are worth a hundred million dollars a few later's, few in a, excuse me, few, fewer, I gave talk. Few years later with stock buys. I plan to truly be a public servant. If you need something, I'm there for you. Uh, I'm, my door's always open.
I think, um, I would be great for office for the city is because I think I bring a fresh perspective. Um, I have lived, did not grow up in the city, but I do have ideas. I've traveled all over the country for multiple years. So I think I bring additional skills and, um, ideas that maybe would be fresh for this city. Um, I do have a volunteer heart and love to give, um, do a lot in the city as far as volunteers. So, um, I'm here to serve, continue to serve. My name is Karen Dekowski and I am asking for your vote. And the reason I'm, I'm asking for your vote is because I research, I look into how things are accomplished and I know we can do better. I've had some, so much in, uh, training and, and experience working for city government, federal government, county government and state government, as well as the private enterprise. So I, thank you.
I am committed to our community. And being city council, I work for you. I have no, um, other interest except for doing the best that I can do to represent the citizens of Mesquite. And, yeah, being on city council, it's time dedication. It's doing research on matters that are coming before city council and going to meetings and making sure that things are done in the proper order. Vote Kim Walters.
I worked for the government for over 30 years. The last 17 years I worked in management. With state government, we worked closely with the federal government, bringing Colorado River water into Salt Lake County. I understand finance, I understand procurement, and I see some, some times at the city council right now, in my estimate, I'm making the best choices. I'd like to see people, somebody up there that understands and can question that. I also love the kids here and I want to see them be successful and become our workforce. Vote Paul Wamas, I promise to, to do everything I can to make those two come true.
I'd like to take a moment to thank all of our candidates. Thank you for taking the time, we appreciate you being here. Great stuff, Dan.